The Mount Clement Board of Education to order, please. Call roll.
Mr. Bruley.
Here.
Ms. Escalante.
Here.
Dr. McFadden. Mr. Monk.
Present.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, sir Dave.
The link sent to us already, because I don't see it.
Yes, on the agenda.
It's not highlighted, the link, so he has to go in a zoom and then paste and copy the ID.
And can you hear what people are saying, Dave?
Yeah, we got paste and copy from the agenda.
Yeah, or I just, it's not highlighted hyperlink, but I just clicked on it and it went in.
Yeah.
Through the process, I got lucky, so you might not have to do it. Yeah, so it's not hyperlink, but if you click on it, it should open up. That's worth seeing in myself.
Tell them I'm texting it to them right now.
If not, you can just hang out on my phone and, you know, talk and we'll, you know, we're dealing. Okay, we have a, we have a corps that's been established next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Escalante, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Yes, I sure will. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Escalante.
You're welcome.
Next on Citizens Comments, this is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. Although we're not face to face and we're zoom, we still honor the thoughts and ideas and concerns of our citizens. So this is the opportunity on the agenda for you to address the board. The agenda is now open for comments. Patrick, you would probably have to coordinate that, because I can't, I don't see people raising hands. I've asked all to unmute, and so far, we have no takers, Mr. President.
For, Mr. President, for the record, just a little IT technology info. There's a button down at the bottom that says reaction. If you click on that, there's a hand thing that they can hit on there, and if somebody wants to say something, they can hit their hand, and it'll show up on everybody on screen.
What did you say?
To that, to Mr. Monk's comment on the IT part, from the participants' window, participants, you would have an option to raise your hand, so that, and there, you should see my hand, and that puts me at the top of the list. So you can raise your hand, and the host, which would be Patrick, can lower your hand when you're done. That's, yeah.
All right, thank you, thanks for those IT lessons, real quick. Second call for Citizens Comments. Last call, Citizens Comments. Hearing us in none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, action item, item five, the consent agenda, under the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of them for the August 18th, 2020 regular meeting, the August 27th, 2019. Hold on. Okay. And the September 10th, 2020 special meeting. The chair would entertain a motion relative to consent agenda item 5A. So move. Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
And seconded by Ms. Escalante. I have a correction to the minutes on page six. On the August 19th, 2020 meeting minutes, under item 12, the executive session. The, the motion does not show us, does not show us coming back into session. And I know I always call to, for a vote to come out of executive session. But I don't see, let's see, let me see, I don't see that being shown in the minutes, where it's moved to come out of executive session, when we came back out of, to, out of executive session. It shows you, let's see, hold on, yeah, because it shows the meeting went into executive session at 9:31. Then agenda item 13 is adjournment, and it's who moved and who's second to adjourn the meeting. There was a move and second to come out of the executive session. And so that, that needs to be added to the minutes.
Hey, that was one where we were all waiting on the hall, and when we returned, you did tell me who motioned to adjourn, but I didn't get who moved out of executive session.
I'll have to go back and review my, my notes, and I'll update, I'll provide that to you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think that there was an immediate motion to adjourn that night, and that that didn't happen. That's my pretty clear recollection.
You know what, you're right, because I'm looking at, yes, you are correct. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bruley. Never mind. Oh, okay, with that being put aside and corrected, sorry for delaying. Any other questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing us in none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Ms. Escalante.
Yes.
Mr. Bruley.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
I have Mrs. Walker as absent, or Ms. Walker. Mr. Monk?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Item six, information coming out of the business committee, item 6A, approval of the bills for payment. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item 6A, approval.
I move to approve the, the bills.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett. Support. Seconded by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Monk.
Uh, Ms. Bills, is Ms. Potter on?
Yes, she is.
All right, did we ever find out the information that we had talked about as far as that, the playground and the mulch and the cost, did we ever find out about, or do we ever get any information on that?
Yes, I sent that question to Mrs. Potter, I believe she is on.
I am. Yes. Okay, so the, the item that you saw for mulch was an open PO, and we have received that mulch, or we have, we have issued that PO, however, we were waiting until we were closer to a decision on reopening school to apply the mulch, because it is $18,000. And if we're not going to reopen, and we're not going to allow students in the building and grounds, why spend the actual money? So because the decision has been made to start with King, Mr. Samuel has been given the instruction to make sure that that happens before the end of this week. That mulch is going to be distributed around the playground at King by Marino's. And as the board then makes the decision about opening the other schools, we will apply the mulch as needed. And that, that is something that I had a discussion with Mr. Samuel about exploring a more permanent method of mulching the yard, so that we could perhaps buy a, a mulch from synthetic materials such as rubber that could be considered safer and is also more long lasting, would give us, you know, seven to 10 years before we have to have these big expenses. So looking down the line could save us money, but that is something we'll be exploring moving into future years.
Okay, and you guys are taking into account with, Mr. Bruley brought it, as far as the arsenic, and make sure it's healthier and safer for the kids.
Yes, the grading for playground mulch is completely different than the mulch that you would use in your home or in a commercial setting just for decoration. And it must, it must pass all of the safety measures in order to be graded as playground mulch.
Okay, and we'll definitely look for the better price.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? On the floor, approval of the bills for payment. Hearing us in none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Item 6B, approval. Superintendent Monique, Assistant Superintendent Barbara Potter, has authorized signer for checks, contracts, agreements, and purchase orders. In the past, we would, or for the past couple of years, we had Mrs. Davis as a signatory, both of those positions, going back a step further than that, when Dr. Pearson was superintendent, he was a signatory, and Mrs. Davis as Assistant Superintendent in charge of business was the cosecretor signer. And the chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item 6B, approval designation of Superintendent Monique Bills and Assistant Superintendent contracts, purchase orders. And other agreement.
So move.
Work.
Moved by Mr. Monk, seconded by Mrs. Jarrett. Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor?
Question.
Yes, sir.
In our discussion of this before, there was that Linda Austin would be kept on. This resolution does not say that. Does that need to be included, or is a resolution passed prior, just assume that? Is this a replacement resolution, or is this an addition resolution?
This is an addition resolution, adding Mrs. Potter and myself. As you look at the background information, it's to add myself and Mrs. Potter. Linda Austin has been the signer on this account for several years.
Okay, I just have the red text in front of me.
Right.
That's approval of the designation, so I don't have the exact text. I just want to make sure that this is not a replacement resolution.
Right, nope, it's an addition.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing us in none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6C, approval to work with local realtor to find an as fair market price for Washington Elementary Building for the purpose of negotiations with, and, and the state, and the sale of Washington Elementary School with the county. This is the one, Mrs. Potter.
So, we have reached out to the county, as you know from prior meetings, because their lease agreement had expired. They are requesting that we offer a one-year extension on the lease as we negotiate the possible purchase terms of the building to the county. They have expressed an interest in purchasing and have been asking for a purchase price. Although I know that you have had the building appraised in the past, I believe that the appraisal is over a year old, and probably, I suspect, things have changed. So I am suggesting that we work with a local commercial realtor who can walk through and give us an as-is price on the building, so that we can begin the negotiations. In addition to that, we are seeking for the board to offer some guidance that you do indeed intend or, or wish to extend a one-year contract on the lease agreement to the county while we negotiate these terms, but that that lease agreement will be at the terms that we proposed with a slight rent increase and the county taking on more responsibility as far as the operations of the building.
Yeah, help me out, somebody can, you know, to me, that, that, that sounds like two separate motions.
So the first one would be to make a motion to pursue the sale of the building and work, pursue a sale of the building with updated, or negotiate a sale of the building with updated, fair market asking price with the county. That would be number one, correct?
Well, that's what I'm trying, because the way I'm looking at it, you know, we want to utilize the service of a realtor to find an as-is fair market price for Washington Elementary. And we want to get that price, so that can be the starting point or some point of a negotiation of the sale to the county. That's, that, that's one motion, that's clear. But then the part where she, where she's talked about the extension, the one-year extension, with the changes that the district added to the agreement. That's why, that's why I'm saying, to me, it sounds like, to me, it sounds like that's two separate motions.
That is, that is two separate motions.
That's, that's how I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Yeah, one motion is to extend the contract, the other one is to seek out a realtor to get a fair market price. So that is two different types of motions.
That's, that's how I'm looking at it, yeah.
So. I'd make a motion to pursue the lease agreement with the county at this, our, lease agreement at our updated price. Oh, Mr. Monk, you know what, maybe you should make it, you had it just right.
Ms. Potter, have you introduced the, what the district was, was requesting for, for the, the price for the lease, and now all the various changes that we talked about, have that been provided to, to the county?
Yes, sir, so back in, I believe it was March, they offered a lease to the district with reduced rent and no involvement in the maintenance or upkeep of the building whatsoever, that would transfer 100% to district cost. We came back after the August meeting and offered them the proposal that was given at that time, which was a slight increase in rent, and then them taking on their own utilities and maintenance costs, except for those items permanently connected to the building, so above the drop ceiling and below the floor. And at that time, we also asked if they would be interested in entering into negotiations on purchasing the building. Their response back was that they would like to, at the, they would be interested in negotiating purchasing the building, and then countered that proposal with, could we extend the current lease terms that were currently under operating, had been operating under for one year while we negotiate the purchase price? The current lease terms, or the expired lease terms, rather, were that they would pay $10,000 a month. Of that 3,500 was to be counted toward utility costs, so the actual rental was 6,500. And then we would bill them for any utilities above 3,500, or reimburse them for any utilities that had aggregate total below the 3,500 benchmark. And then we had kind of a, we were providing their lawn maintenance, their snow removal, and their custodial. They were billing, and they were paying us back, but there was always some contention with whose truly responsibility it was, and so we're trying to clean that up in this final year.
Okay, let, let, let me cut you off, to get more to my question. I know they say they want to extend the contract at, at the old, at the old, with the old provisions, at the lower rate, etc., etc. What offer did we, are there, are, is this motion going to be looking at? Because the motion put on the floor by Mrs. Jarrett was the extension for one year at the district's proposed rate. That's why, had they, had they been aware, because it said they countered with, you know, staying at the old rate, well.
Yes.
Is to go with the new rate.
The, the county was provided with a copy of the lease that was given to the board, which was generated through our legal counsel with Troon, showing that the rental would go to 12,000 a month, that the only utilities we would bill them back for would be for electricity and gas, because we buy them as a consortium and, and a unit price, that they would take on their own water, trash removal, lawn care, snow removal, maintenance, and custodial for their building.
Got you, I see your hand, Mr. Monk.
Yes, okay, just to add some clarity here, right now, the motion on the floor, or the motion pertaining to the agenda, has to do with only C. The extended contract for, 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 for the county has to be separate, either at another time or for a different motion. So at this time, I will move to approve to work with the local realtor to find ASIS fair market price for Washington Elementary for purposes of negotiating and the sale of Washington Elementary to Macomb County.
There's been a substitute motion by Mr. Monk to approve and work with a local realtor to find an as-is fair market price for Washington Elementary for the purpose of negotiation and the sale of Washington Elementary to Macomb County. Is there a second?
There goes.
Looking by Mr. Bruley. Any questions, discussion, this, on the motion on the floor? I hear none, and I don't see any hands, so call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, this was a substitute motion, has, what was the wording change?
The, it's a substitute motion by.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Was there a second to the first motion?
Yes, I believe there was.
No, there wasn't.
There wasn't, I'm sorry, I apologize, there, there, it's not a substitute motion. The, Mr. Monk put on the floor a motion, and thank you, thank you for keeping me straight. The motion is, it's not a substitute motion, it'd be moved by member Monk to approve to work with the local realtor to find an as-is fair market price for Washington Elementary for the purchase, purposes of negotiation and sale of the Washington Elementary Building to Macomb County. That is the motion, not a substitute, thank you, because the other motion died for lack of second. Mrs. Jarrett's original motion, died for lack of second. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing us in none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Oh, Dr. McFadden, he texted me, he had to leave, there was an emergency, so he's not on right now.
Okay, well, absent. Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Rick?
Yes, sir.
Um, when, I'm going to ask you a guidance on this. Do we need to make a motion to direct Ms. Potter to enter in negotiation with an extended lease for Macomb County at this time?
That would be up to the will of the board, because they, they've been operating under the old guidelines of the old contract, lease agreement that expired in March, I think, I heard Mrs. Potter say. If the board wants to enact the, the new rate, we could do so, or we could, it's up to the board. We can direct her to go back and negotiate with that, you know, at that rate, but I think she's already taken that to the table, that rate, and I don't know if she feels.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think it would be helpful that if we put it in resolution form, I don't think we've had as comprehensive, a resolution on this, and I think it would benefit Ms. Potter in her discussions to say that's what the board wants.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It's at the will of the board.
So I will move, I move that we direct Ms. Potter to enter into a one-year extension negotiation with Macomb County.
Support.
I, I would like to just add for negotiations for the lease at Washington Elementary.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Under, under the conditions that our law firm has set out under the new lease arrangements.
Okay, let's see if we can.
Put all three of those parts together.
And it's all going to be attributed to you, Mr. Monk. I remember Monk to direct Mrs. Potter to negotiate with the lease of Washington Elementary with Macomb County, using all guidelines from our legal counsel, if I'm hearing, Mr. Mr., am I right, Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
For the term of one year?
Yeah, I put that in my original, my, put that in the motion, yeah.
And Mr. Chair, if, when that motion is accepted, I'd like to offer an amendment that would just add some other things to it.
No problem, sir. Mr. Shepherd, do you have, can you read back what you have as the motion, and we'll, we'll work with you, because as you work with us.
Okay, I got enter into lease negotiations with Washington Elementary.
One year.
No.
For one year.
No, no, we're not, we're not entering in a lease agreement with Washington Elementary. We're watching, entering a lease agreement for Washington Elementary.
Okay, so not negotiations agreement?
No, 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 I'm trying to, the motion Mr. Monk put out was to direct Mrs. Potter.
Right.
To negotiate with Macomb County for the lease, one-year lease of Washington Elementary, using all guidelines put forth from our legal counsel.
Correct.
I've written as fast as I can here.
That's my shorthand, you know, pad.
Okay. Uh, this is being recorded, so. But, okay, so we are going to direct Mrs. Potter to enter into lease negotiations?
You can say it, yeah.
With Macomb County? For Washington Elementary? With legal guidelines from our legal?
No, utilizing all.
Utilizing.
Guidelines from our legal counsel. Using all guy, utilizing all guidelines.
Utilizing all guidelines. Oh, utilizing all legal guidelines from?
All guidelines from legal counsel.
All guidelines from legal counsel. All guidelines from legal counsel. Okay.
Mister Monk, Mister Brewley, is that captured it?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
I would like to offer an amendment at this point.
Okay, Mister Brewley?
I wanted to offer it in an amendment form only because I didn't want to complicate what we were trying to write down. And add another clause. So I would say my motion would be notwithstanding the one-year term, if acceptable conditions can be met by both parties, that we could sell the building to Macomb County within the one-year term.
Now, no, Paul didn't get that.
Which is why I'm making it an amendment.
Fin the one-year.
He still has to get it.
All right. Notwithstanding the one-year term, if. And then I got sell within the one year, so there's a big.
If both parties agree.
If both parties agree.
To a sale.
To a sale.
Within the one-year term that it could proceed. If we come to an agreement.
To a sale within the one-year term.
Of the rental.
Basically, what Ed is saying, if we come to a deal, we can deal that and the breaks the lease and the deal goes through.
Yes.
Right. Support.
Okay, it was moved by Mister, Mister Brewley to amend the motion. And it was second by. And we'll vote on the amendment first. And amendment is the language notwithstanding the one-year term, if both parties come to agreement, selling the building, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That, that's the amendment, that's what we're voting on. So Paul, read back what you have, because you know, we're on the record, so read back what you.
Okay, notwithstanding the one-year term, if both parties agree to a sale within the one-year term of the rental agreement?
The sale can proceed.
Sale can proceed.
I know one thing, we giving a class on document contracts and specifications, I know that.
Okay. That, that's what we're, that's what we're voting on, ladies and gentlemen, the amendment. Are any questions, comments on the amendment? You ain't gonna sing none? Call roll, please.
Mister Brewley?
Yes.
Mister Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mister Rickman?
Yes. The amendment passes. Now we vote on the main motion as amended. And Paul, here you go, read it back.
I'll try this again. Okay. We're entering into lease negotiations.
Nope, you gotta direct.
Direct.
Direct Mrs. Potter, because we're not, we're not. We're directing Mrs. Potter, or actually, we direct the superintendent. Actually, we're directing the superintendent.
Okay, yes.
So I'm scratching Mrs. Potter.
And putting superintendent.
We're gonna direct superintendent to enter into negotiations with Macomb County with legal guidelines.
No, you know, you know, in Macomb County for the one-year leasing of Washington Elementary.
One-year leasing.
You had it, you had it at one time.
For the one-year leasing of Washington Elementary.
And then the part with the guideline, utilizing all guidelines from our, you know, from our legal counsel.
Utilizing all guidelines for our legal counsel.
And then you add on the notwithstanding part.
Yes, that, yeah, that vote, so keep reading, notwithstanding the one-year term if both parties agree to a sale.
Yep, because that's what we're voting on now. We're voting on all of that stuff put together.
During the rental agreement, the sale can proceed.
So we comfortable with what we're doing on this, on this vote? I got to thumb up. Okay, I hear no other objections. All right, so when we're voting on the main motion as amended. Any questions, comments, concerns on the vote, on the main motion as amended? You ain't gonna sing none? Call roll, please.
Mister Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mister Brewley?
Yes.
Mister Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. We got through that.
That was our class.
Let's see, here we go. Item D. Approval of the negotiation with the city of Mount Clemens to release the district from the current lease agreement on Karen's Community Center. To allow the city to partner advancing Macomb.
Do you want a motion? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, ma'am, sorry. Yes, ma'am. The chair would entertain a motion. Agenda item six D.
I make a motion to approve the negotiations with Mount Clemens, city of Mount Clemens to release the district from the current lease agreement on Karen's Community Center to allow the city to partner with advancing Macomb.
Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Mrs. Escalante. Any questions, comments or concerns? I have, I have a concern and a question and a comment, I guess, all together, I don't know. The same thing that I mentioned at the workshop is, if we approve the negotiations with the city of Mount Clemens to release the district from the lease agreement on Karen's Community Center, why can't we just do that? Then what they, then in turn, because the way, the way it comes together, it sounds like that it's all together, you know, one is, one is based on the other. If we give this, the lease, if the city takes back the lease, they can negotiate with whomever they want. If they want to go with advancing Macomb, then fine, they can do that. It's just, you know, it's just a comment. I'm gonna support the motion, but it just seems like a little convoluted to me, but that's just my comment on it.
I got a question also.
Yes, sir, Mr. Monk.
If, and I guess I'm playing devil's advocate here. If we, and I'm for the motion, but if things break down between the city and advancing Macomb, are we still on the hook for everything? If we're gonna be, if the district's gonna be let out of the lease? What if everything breaks down? What if negotiation breaks down between the city of Mount Clemens and advancing Macomb? And they can't come to a deal?
That, that, that's sort of like what, you know.
That's kind of what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, because one is dependent on the other.
Right.
The city takes back the obligation of the lease agreement from the school district, then.
I mean, they assume all costs along with that, right?
I'm thinking somebody is, but you know, I think Mrs. Bill might be able to, because they, you know.
Yeah, Mrs. Bill, you got any comments on that?
Yes, from what I know, the city does not have the capacity to take over the Karen Center. They're in a similar financial situation that we are. And advancing Macomb has grants that will pay for, that will play, pay for the renovations and to take care of that property. So it's all contention on advancing Macomb getting this particular, this particular piece of property.
Right. So really, I mean, it really rests on advancing Macomb taking over, but if they don't take over, we back, we're back, right back to square one.
Yes, we are. Advancing Macomb is very interested in taking over and has several nonprofits that are interested in using that facility.
Do, can't, I'm just, I'm just throwing something out in the wind. Why are we negotiating with the city of Mount Clemens to release it? Why can't we just send a request of the city? Why can't the board send a request to the city of Mount Clemens to release us of our obligation under the current lease of Karen's Community Center? Because it sounds like we're negotiating and we don't know what, what the things, what is part of the negotiation? Because based on what Mr. Samuel said, there's some, some very, there are some cost, cost factors affiliated with the building and the property that we don't have, and it sounds like the city doesn't have either. So I'm just, is this gonna be an actual negotiation? Or we go to the city manager and sit down and say, okay, Mister Manager, we, we want you to take back the lease that you gave us for this, for this property?
I want to ask, Ms. Potter, what's your take on this? He wasn't at the workshop, so, and we talked about this. What's your take on this, Ms. Potter?
So the impetus behind this motion began on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, when Diane Banks from advancing Macomb reached out to me via email. She was asking about partnering for a Karen Center. She said that she was interested, the coalition is proposing to take on the cost of building maintenance and operations of the Karen Center for various programming. In order to present this as an option to the district, we are wondering if you could share your thoughts on which strategy would be of more interest to the Mount Clemens Public School District? Number one was that we would remain the owner, but the community coalition would assume all costs associated with building maintenance and operations, and the district remains a partner in programming and community outreach in the location. Number two was ownership of the building transfers back to the city of Mount Clemens. The coalition assumes all costs associated with building maintenance and operations, and the Karen's Community Center is no longer a liability or an asset to the district. At that point, I reached out to Ms., to Ms. Banks to ask if she was speaking on behalf of the city, because she was kind of offering us these two options, like she had some authority. And I, I really wasn't that familiar with advancing Macomb, I wasn't sure if it was a division of the city or, or what was happening. So I, I asked her, I asked her about whether she was speaking for the city of Mount Clemens or part of the city. And I also advised her of the three entities we had been advised about as lien holders or part owners somehow of the building, those being the city of Mount Clemens, the Archdiocese of Detroit and the Department of Housing and Urban Development. At that point, Don Johnson, the city manager for the city of Mount Clemens, reached out on Thursday, August twenty-seventh, addressing both Monique and myself in an email, explaining that advancing Macomb is an independent, private, non-for-profit organization, and said the following. The city of Mount Clemens, like the Mount Clemens Community Schools, is facing many financial challenges. We are not in a position to take over the Karen Center on our own. However, we would be willing to consider doing so as part of a partnership agreement with advancing Macomb or with another organization that can provide the funding necessary to properly maintain the building and grounds and offer meaningful programs to the residents. We would also be supportive of the school district doing so. So he followed that with the Karen Center and the surrounding guards, our surrounding grounds could and should be a major asset to the community, one way or another. I would like to see that happen, and I'm sure you do as well. So given our current situation, we are recommending to the board that we break our current agreement with the city so that they may enter into this new contract with advancing Macomb. But Mister Rickman is completely correct. If they agree to break the lease agreement, we would be out of that from that point on. And what the city chooses to do with that property or who they choose to partner with would be up to their discretion. But the reason that the words for partnering with advancing Macomb is included in all of this is because they are the people that started the ball rolling and they are the organization. The city has kind of opened the door so that the district can exit from this ninety-nine-year lease.
Okay. I asked a question, he wasn't at the workshop. I asked a question, have we spoken with HUD and our?
No. So if the, if the school board is willing now to begin this process, my recommendation would be that we now get our legal attorney, who is already offered, if this is something we are interested in doing, to take over the legal aspects of these negotiations so that we can be assured that we are not creating some type of liability in this process. So I'm looking for guidance from the board that this is indeed a plan you are interested in pursuing with the idea that at the end of this process, we would no longer be affiliated with in any way the Karen's Community Center.
Let me add this to the, to the discussion. With the, because anything, legal counsel would have to be involved in that. And so could we pass a motion to stating that the board directs a superintendent to be, to direct legal counsel to begin negotiations with the city to cease the lease of Karen's Community Center?
Would that not be a?
Question?
I heard Mrs. Jarrett first and then Mister Brewley.
Would that not be an amendment then? To the original motion?
It would, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there for right now, because you know, it would be a change to the motion, yes. Because it is, that would definitely be a different direction than what current motion is. Mister Brewley?
I would support the original motion, and the reason is this. Neither the school district nor the city have the financial means to do this. If we're just looking to get out of it and put it onto the city, I think we're gonna be met with a no. If we're cooperative in nature and find a third party that we all agree to, that will do this in the spirit that will, in fact, get us out financially from underneath this, which we can't afford, but still allow us to have the potential of programming when we know that most of our students come from this area geographically, that is closer to their houses than are any of the other school buildings we have, that it could be a benefit to us. It is not today a benefit, but if we're cooperative of nature, it will help sell advancing Macomb to say, hey, the school district will be with us and the city will be with us, and it builds a community level of support. If it's perceived that it's just an effort to get rid of a building, I think you're going to be less likely to have success with the nonprofits. I think having it as open as possible, which this motion does, gives you the best possibility of, in the end, securing. Of in the end securing what we want to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley.
I got a question. I guess my question to, to Mr. Brewley and, and that comment. Is the advanced McComb gonna take over the entire cost? Parkinut has to be redone. The kitchen situation, probably the, the heating and the, the ventilation and the air conditioning, everything. Or are advanced McComb looking to take over the bulk of it? But the city of Mount Clemens and the district will be kicking in a little bit. To me, that's unclear. Is it totally advanced McComb or is it eighty percent advanced McComb, ten percent district, ten percent city?
Uh, answer. This is a negotiation.
Okay.
This begins the process, this doesn't commit anyone, but advancing McComb does have ties. To the Ralph Wilson Foundation.
Okay.
The Ralph Wilson Foundation is the one that was set up by the former owner of the Buffalo Bills. That is committed to spending X millions of dollars. Over the next five years to do local programming and this would be their first effort in McComb County. A lot of the money has gone to Wayne County. Their connection is through, uh, a foundation that is quite capable financially of doing everything. Now, they're looking though for community support. They're not looking for projects. Which they will be the only one there. They understand financially, they may be the player, but they want other. Public entities to feed into this, so this is a community deal.
Okay, so.
If they're thinking that we're just dumping the building on them, I don't think they're gonna be too interested.
Well, no, okay, so, but that's why I asked my question, Ed. So they are looking, they are looking to finance this themselves.
They are, and, well, let's put it this way.
And that's the understanding.
They are capable of doing it.
Okay, capable and are two different things, though, yeah.
They are capable, but they haven't made any commitment yet, but this is the kind of place that would give them a ready-made building. The buy-in of community level support. We may want to have a class or two over there, you know. And that be the extent of it, but then our name gets used in a good way. And advancing McComb gets a good deal out of this, because this is not advancing McComb's money. They would be the intermediary. So it has a potential, but potential is the word. This could work. But I mean, but it's much better than we've ever been presented so far.
Okay, well, you asking clarity, so this is potential and that's. I've been hearing this is a lock solid thing, but you, like you just said, and I'm willing, and I'm, I'm willing to vote for this. I mean, yeah, we should open a negotiation. But it's not lock solid. It's a potential, which is good, but it's not so lock solid as of yet.
Yes, it is not lock solid.
Okay, all right, okay. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand.
And I, I understand, um, from that, that perspective, Ed, um, and I just look back when we, the district first. Had the building built, uh, there were, we had a, a truckload of nonprofit, uh, community support. Uh, as long as the district could pay the bills. Um, we started losing those, those community support groups. Uh, when we started asking them to kick in the kitty. Um, in terms of this motion. If I'm the superintendent. I'm really confused with the first, with the first sentence, approval of negotiations with the city of Mount Clemens. Um, I would like to amend the motion to re. Direct superintendent to begin negotiations. Uh, and she could, and, and I want to direct her, she would not be the negotiations herself, but. Legal counsel negotiates all contracts and et cetera for us, but i- if that should be part of an amendment. Uh, I would add that, or am I looking at it? You know, is anybody not seeing it the way I'm seeing it? Cause I could be the only person that's seeing that. Who approves? I mean, the board is approving the negotiation. Who's directing it?
Other meetings with church, they took over three hours, so.
Who's that?
Who's that?
That's my phone machine, ignore it.
Okay, no, I, no, I'm, no, I, I'm in agreeing with you, Earl. I think, yeah, not approved, but, and, you know, direct the superintendent to enter into negotiation.
So I would add, I would like to amend the motion to, to direct the superintendent to begin negotiations. Pardon it, um, you know, but you, I've just changed, make it simple, or to direct superintendent to begin negotiations. Um, with the city of Mount Clemens, um, to release the district from the current Carnes lease agreement on, on current lease agreement. On Carnes Community Center, allow the city to partner with advancing McComb. So the amendment is the beginning is, is. Uh, to direct the superintendent to begin negotiations.
Right.
So that would be my amendment to strike approval of the negotiations and direct the superintendent to begin negotiations.
Support.
Uh, second by Mr. Monk.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Could that be considered a friendly amendment accepted by both the maker of the motion and the seconder?
Um, now you're really testing me tonight. Could that be considered a friendly amendment? Uh. If I was the maker of the motion, I wouldn't consider that friendly.
Why? I would.
Because any amendment is not, no amendment is friendly.
Yes, you can have a friendly amendment.
I, I, I understand there's a term called friendly amendment, but, um.
I mean, the wording was not changed that much. It was actually to enter into negotiation.
No, it was putting a person to it. This does not, this does not, this current motion doesn't, we just say approval of the negotiations. We're not directing anybody to do anything. By amendment.
I was only asking, I just wanted to proceed here, so. It's okay, let's vote and get it on.
But amendment is to direct the superintendent to begin negotiations and then the rest of it is the same. And that was Mr. Monk's second.
Yes.
That's what Mr. Monk, Mr. Brewley was commenting on. Any additional comments, concerns, questions? You can see in there, call the roll, please.
Hey, um, Mr. Rippon.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Mrs. Scolante.
Yes.
She's absent, so that's fine.
Now we'll vote on the main motion as approved, so is, we're voting to. Direct the superintendent to begin negotiations with the city of Mount Clemens to release the district from the current lease agreement. On Carnes Community Center to allow the city to partner with advancing McComb. Any questions, comments, concerns on the main motion as amended? Call the roll, please.
Yeah, Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Scolante.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mr. Rippon.
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be agenda item, uh, six E, church leases.
I need to unmute. I'm, I'm gonna pass this over to, um, Mrs. Potter.
Okay. I believe it was in the August workshop, we discussed the church leases. For, um, two churches that are currently using the building use form for the secondary complex. The first is called New Generation and the second is called New Anthem. And what we proposed at that time was to offer both of these entities a lease agree, agreement. That would offer the district some protections against liabilities from potential lawsuits. As well as give us the right to more stringently control activities within the building. In relation to the COVID pandemic as well as other, um, uses of the building by these groups. At that time, there was some discussion during which we were asked to come up with a different pricing structure. We then came to the board in the August regular meeting with this proposed new pricing structure, which. We tried very hard to make as equitable as possible between the two groups. The differences between the groups is both the size of the congregation and the time spent in the building by the churches for their services.
Potter, Mrs. Potter, um, we talked, we went over all of that stuff, um, last Thursday.
Okay.
Has, has there been any, has there been any, um, changes from what was reported out to us at the workshop?
No.
What, what we were presenting moving forward, um, with the negotiations or the offerings of those two. Lease agreement with those, with those, um, with those entities.
No, we are just asking for board approval to, um, present them for signing and execute the contracts.
So moved.
Moved by member Brewley.
Support.
Seconded by Mrs. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Monk.
Um, Madam Superintendent, um. I, you know, with this. Current agreement. We're not being consistent across the board and I, and I said to say this, I looked up. The policy on fees, uh, for use of district buildings. And for, there should be two forms in the AG and they're not there. Form seventy-five, ten, F three and seventy-five, ten, F four. Those two pertaining to building usage. If, is my understanding, and I'll vote for this, but I think we need to, and we can probably. Talk about this in policy, we need to make sure this is consistent. That formula that's been put forth. As far as how to use by square footage and all that is just way too complicated. It's just because however it came out, one group is paying less and another group is paying more. And it's just so happened that the group that has the biggest space usage in our building is paying less. And one is, has the least amount of space in our building is paying more. How that was figured out? I tried to follow that form and what whoever, Robin, whoever came up with that square footage. But from my recollection, when we set this in policy, I want to say in my second year here. We directed the superintendent to come out with a building usage form based on rooms and time. As far as the uses in our buildings and that's how it should be. Um. It's just confusing because now we're saying we're gonna charge people based on square footage. But our policy say in our. Our form that we use says based on room and time that you use. So there's a difference. That's, that's, that's just inconsistency. So I, I say that to say we need to relook that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Um, did we not, is that not being offered to the churches as leases as opposed to? I, I think I recall some discussion about it being converted to leases as opposed to. Them having to go fill out the building usage forms, et cetera, et cetera.
That is correct, Mr. Rickman. These are permanent use, um, leases so that for the smaller church is using two rooms. And they're paying the lesser amount of rent and the other church will be utilizing. Um, one, two, four rooms permanently, permanent use, full-time use of the rooms. And then exclusive rental on the high school, second floor auditorium on Sundays. And they are paying the higher rent.
And, um, uh, sorry for not remember, and that's, these are, how many, these are one-year leases?
Uh, I, I believe they are two-year leases. Um, but we are open to the New Generation Church asked for a two-year lease. We plan to match that with New Anthem. However, my understanding is, is that New Anthem may only want to go year to year. And if that's their wish, then we can negotiate that with them.
Okay, now in the two-year agreement is, are there any provisions for any escalating clauses? If we get, uh, if there's a, a, upturn in, in gas prices, et cetera, or something.
Yes, yes, so they, they do have language that if they need to add another room, for example, that that's already built in. The price structure is already built in. And if both lang, both leases contain language that say that if for any reason. Our, um, utility costs go up beyond a point where we feel it's being covered. It gives us permission to bill them back for that portion.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to remember.
So these are not one-year leases, these are two-year leases.
Correct. I believe New Generation requested a two-year lease and because we're doing for one, we would offer for both. To remain completely equitable. Um, but I was advised that there's a possibility that New Anthem may not want a two-year lease. Because they're growing so much, they may grow out of the space. Before their two-year lease would be up and so they may ask for a one-year with a one-year extension. Rather than being locked in at two years so that if they did need to seek a larger space, they wouldn't be. Facing breaking the lease per se.
Right. I just don't agree with two years. I'd rather see a one-year lease or a year a year.
We can do one-year leases. I, to be honest with you, I can't remember exactly what the language for each of these leases said. I just recall that one did ask for two years and one has. Has the potential of outgrowing the space we can provide them, so there's a chance they would not want a two-year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brewley.
If the maker, if it, the seconder of the motion will agree, we'll make sure it's a one-year lease.
That's fine.
Help me out, that's, we, was this moved yet?
I moved it. And I think seconded, and so if the seconder of the motion, I'm the maker, would agree. We will put in it, that'd be a one-year lease.
Okay, um, the maker of the motion would make, I understand today will, these leases will be one-year offers. Where, this Escalante, you second that, is that, are you in agreement?
Sure, yes, I am.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to. Prove the lease, church leases. Hearing seen now and call the roll, please.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Mrs. Scolante.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Rippon.
Yes, motion carries. Business committee item six F, contract extension with Marinos Landscaping. This is Bill. You can punt it to Mrs. Potter.
I'm sorry, did you want me to talk about this?
Yes, I said I was gonna punt this to Mrs. Potter, but I unmute.
And then she can ask, punt what she wants to do.
Okay, so, um, in twenty seventeen, you entered into a three-year contract. For snow removal and lawn care with Marino. Um, and that contract actually has already expired for the snow removal part as of three thirty-one. And, um, the district failed to act upon that, um, going out to seek. Quotes for snow removal until just this month, as a matter of fact. And so it was brought to, uh, my attention in the business office by Mr. Samuel. That we were about to enter into a La, La Niña year with a call for more snow than normal. And we did not have a contract for, uh, snow care. As a result of that, we reached out to Marino's. Who has offered to extend exactly the same terms for an additional three years with a zero. for an additional three years with a zero increase. Um, if we would agree to a three-year term, based on their, the scope of the work that they agreed to do three years ago, we reached out for informal quotes per board policy to five or six other landscaping companies that are local. And only one of them has responded and that is Elegant Lawn Care. Um, and they did not beat Marino on price. Uh, in addition to that, they are only willing to extend the guarantee of these prices through the end of September. Uh, I did contact them and advise that the board may like an extra month to look over their options and they would not extend pricing beyond nine thirty because the closer you get to snow, the more costly their costs are and if they're going to win the contract, they want to start bringing in their supplies now while they can control their costs. So um, I am asking the board to approve the Marino contract for the following reasons. A, they beat them on price. B, the three-year contract allows us to control our snow removal cost per push and buy-bag application on salting services as well as lawn mowing, edging, trimming and trash pickup for three years. When we ask people to do it for a shorter time, they're going to bump prices up because they um, they can't control their costs, so they can't spread their, their operational costs over a longer contract. So it benefits us to proceed with this plan. In addition, we know that Marino's has performed faithfully, they understand exactly what we need in order to make school run during inclement weather and we have not been dissatisfied with their services. So at this time, we are asking the board to approve a three-year extension of exactly the same contract terms to Marino's.
The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item six F, the extension with Marino Landscaping as presented.
So moved.
It is moved by Mrs. Escalante, is there a second?
Four.
Seconded by Mrs. Jarrett. Any discussion, questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, this should have been, um, this, this contract should have been negotiated back in February because this contract expired in March of this year. Um, please take into account there's that companies are gonna tell you, I deal with companies a lot, they're gonna tell you that yeah, it's more beneficial to you to do a three-year contract. And that just gives them wiggle room because some suppliers or some companies will charge you because they can, because they have a long contract with you. So, and you guys wasn't here when we first brought on Marino, but Marino actually overcharged us on salt, I believe the first or second year we had them as a contractor. So they don't have a good taste in mama, but I'll, I'll, I will vote for this. But um, now that we have a superintendent and we have a superintendent of finances, um, Ms. Beals, uh, you know, I would hope that uh, you make sure that um, contracts are looked at at least two weeks, I mean, not two weeks, at least two months or not, or a minimum of thirty days out before they are over, so we don't find ourselves in this Prag Myer situation. And I know this situation, this situation is not y'all's fault, I'm not blaming y'all for it. But I think it got through because we had one person doing both, so. But now we got one and one, we're good.
We, we have to remember, ladies and gentlemen, and March is when the sky fell down and, and this, it, it just fell off somebody's plate.
Um, Well, not, what, what early should have been done and like I said in February.
I understand, but you know, that it wasn't done, so we need to move forward.
Oh, I, I, oh, I'm moving forward, I'm moving forward.
So I'm, I'm just saying, you know, yeah, March, but then a whole bunch of stuff and it should have been addressed prior to that, I totally agree.
I have a question.
I, um, I have, I use Marino's contractors for uh, my lawn mowing service and my snow removal service. And when I got, when I got them, they were the lowest responsible bidder and they gave me an extension, a three-year extension with no increase um, to, to cost over the extension of three years. Uh, fuel prices might go down, they might go up, but in terms of labor costs, they're not gonna go down and so I, I thought it was a great deal for my company to, to honor their, you know, their extension of three years uh, for, for, for the, for the services that it provided for me. Mrs. Escalante.
Do we pay um, per ton when they have to salt?
We pay by, um, their price quote is by the application, not the bag. So when they, when they give us a, a price for salting, it's based on how much accumulation is, is outside on the sidewalk. So there's um, an application price for one to six inches and a secondary price for over six inches. Um, but the most important part is that it's by the application and not the bag. Many um, landscapers will charge you by the bag. And the reason that that can become problematic, I think all of you know by now, I came from Elmont. We had our landscapers out there just dump a pile of salt, a bag of salt and kind of kick it around so they could use as many bags as possible. So by saying by the application, it puts some skin in the game for the landscaper to apply that in the most economical way possible for themselves as well. Um, and so I personally like the term by the application, not the bag.
And that, they, they charging us by the application and I think it's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton.
Okay. The only reason I ask is um, several times last winter when I was at Seminole volunteering, there were times where there was so much salt dumped down in the parking lots and the bus loops. It was, it was overkill. Um, it, it could have been a new driver that was doing it, I mean, I don't really know, but I know in previous um, property management experience, we had a company that would come out for like the teeniest amount of snow that the sun would have melted in the morning and instead of just spot salting, they would dump down tons of salt and then charge us per ton. And when we finally caught on to it, it, it was a mild winter, so they were making money that way off of, off of us. Um, so that's why I was asking the question, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, I know it's difficult to keep tabs on everything that's going on in all of our buildings, but um, if we're paying per application and it is measured by the ton, you know, hopefully they're putting down the least amount necessary and we're not, you know, tracking that all into the buildings. I mean, that's wear and tear on our, our maintenance and custodial staff as well. Um, you know, just something to kind of keep in mind because I was pretty surprised at how much was down on more than one occasion when I was there at the building and I was there a lot.
The parking lot salting per application, that per ton place is three hundred and the sidewalk salting per application, that per bag is six fifty. It is seventeen thousand square feet of sidewalks.
And Mrs. Escalante, they, I think in the contract, it states um, that, that, so you're not going out there oval salting when the sun would have melted, it, it states the, the uh, conditions that where they salt. And, and you know, because sometimes you don't get snow, you just get ice.
Right.
That, that's something that, that, you know, that they address also because I think in the contract, it says, you know, there's different for pushes and the pushes determine when they have to, you know, put the salt unless it's for ice.
Okay. Okay.
It could be a new driver and then when you sometimes, when they, when they put the bed up too quick, too much dumps out.
Yeah, no, this was a nice even coat over everything, I mean, it was, it was pretty, the color was beautiful, but there was so much. There was a lot.
Motion on the floor. Here in San Juan, call the roll, please.
Hey, Mrs. Escalante.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Thank you, item seven is uh, out of the recommendation from the athletic committee. Um, hey, fall sports. Mrs. Beal.
Um, yes, the athletic committee met last week, I believe it, or rather this week, I'm sorry, um, Monday evening. And um, Mr. Duncan is here as well as the athletic committee member, so it, I'm gonna toss the football to you guys.
I know the chair is not here, he's.
Right, that's Mr. McFadden, right?
Um, the other two members were probably attended, so.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Mr. Monk.
Yes, sir. So, uh, included in your packet.
You have the floor.
Included in the board's packet is a rundown of um, notes from the committee meeting, including specific team planning. Um, that was presented by Coach Marcus Cribs. Um, in an effort to um, participate in the fall football season. Um, there was not enough interest in continuing the volleyball season um, at this time. So in particular, we met to discuss precautions and planning um, that would be needed to run a football season, albeit short. Um, encouraging to this uh, discussion, you know, is the decision by the Big Ten and, and many other uh, football conferences and to run their seasons with a ton of precautions in place. Um, we've received a lot of guidance from the MHS double A, uh, including the executive orders from the governor as well. Um, so, you know, like I mentioned in your, in your board packets, I included a document um, with links to specific orders and MHS double A recommendations, regulations pertaining to the fall sports. Um, it's part of this planning, um, post-monitoring of those recommendations and regulations um, will happen, um, we will enact as best as we can.
Mr. Duncan, breaking up. There's something, I don't know, you're, you're break, I don't know if anybody else is hearing that, but he's breaking up.
Okay, I will stop my video, maybe that will help.
Uh, that, it's clearer now in terms of the audio portion, sir.
Alright.
At least on my end.
Now you're blessed, you don't have to look at me, alright, so. So, um, what we're, what the plan is basically is, you know, with executive orders and MHS double A recommendations, they've been very proactive and, and reflexive as well given um, current infection rates and, and um, paying attention to the data that is coming out of the health department. Um, as part of this plan, um, we will monitor those and enact um, the recommendations as best as possible to keep all participants, coaches um, and those supporters of those programs closely, as safe as possible. Um, each student, athlete and family will have to complete a COVID athletics participation risk acknowledgement, release and waiver form that was developed by Thrun Law Firm. Um, and that will be coupled with the MHS double A sports health questionnaire as well, which covers um, the health history of each participant, student, athlete. Um, the district and athletic COVID prevention resources will be utilized as needed for practices and competition. Um, there are considerations to be made by the Board of Education um, to particular adjustments to the MHS double A handbook. Um, things like um, eligibility and, and a few other items. Um, the spectators not be permitted, um, as discussed during our committee. Um, we've elected to not have spectators at the games other and the, the only people at the games at the time will be, at the contests will be limited to essential personnel, players and coaches with a plan to live stream the games via YouTube. Coach Cribs um, submitted very team-specific plans that align with the executive orders and also the MHS double A recommendations and regulations. Um, parents will be made aware of where localized COVID testing facilities are and support from the DHS offices. Temperatures will be taken and logged before each practice and game for both players and coaches. On game days before and after events, only ten players and coaches will be allowed in the locker room at any given time. Opposing teams will be alerted that they will not have locker access other than um, need for restroom um, access and we even have restroom access out at the um, at, at the football field, so that can be monitored. Um, there is a plan for rotation of, of cleaning that would be enacted during a contest. Um, locker rooms for either team during the contest will be prohibited other than, like I mentioned, for either medical necessity or restroom use. Um, and only a shared small space will be able to be used during those outs, during those contests, which would be the outdoor restrooms. And we would follow that up with a rotation of, of cleaning during the contest. At halftime, teams will have to remain on the field in separate end zones. Um, only, and at the board's discretion, we suggest starting the season with uh, zero spectators, with a review happening um, in the October board meetings on, on progress of, of obviously the localized data. And at that time, the MHS double A right now um, suggests and, and promotes and, and it's the limitation um, that there are two adults allowed to enter the game per student and per coach. So that would be a restriction that we suggest this board takes into consideration down the road as we get the season launched. We would prefer to launch the season with zero spectators and zero extra people other than just the essential people to run the game, the coaches and the players. There will be no shared water bottles, um, cases of water will be supplied for our, our players. We will alert the uh, away teams of um, a limitation on our providing of um, like water cases and water bottles, they'll have to bring their own with their own plants. Away games, only the head coach will ride the bus and others will drive. Um, the other coaches will drive their own cars. Um, social distancing will be used on the buses and masks will be worn at all time. Masks will be worn during games and practices. Um, you know, Coach uh, Cribs is trying to institute that culture change and, and with with teenagers, i- it, it takes some time and one of the beautiful things about sports is um, the ability to motivate in multiple ways, not just uh, verbally, but taking a lap every now and then, not having a mask on, right, goes a long way. Um, we will be starting with week four, which gives us um, six of nine games to participate in. And um, coach will request that the opposing team send temperature readings along with the names of the adults per child attending the game by noon the day of the home games.
Any questions, uh, comments, um, discussion coming from the athletic committee? Was it?
Questions.
Um, Mr. Brewley, I think I heard.
Thank you. Uh, is there gonna be any testing required?
According to the guidelines that are given to us by the MHS double A, um, it is not a requirement at this time. Um, but you know, like I mentioned, student athletes will be monitored closely um, by temperature readings, um, daily mask use and um, so you know, we're just following the guidelines that are given.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate.
As testing becomes more available, um, certainly that is something that we can look into.
We can get the kids tested at Washington. Testing is available to us if we set it up. And.
Okay, that, that is definitely something we can look into and enact. Um, if that's, if that's what this board needs us to do, then we'll. then we will, we will take a look and see what.
You, you mentioned, pardon me, it's hard to do this. I don't want to speak over you, but I can't tell when you're done always. You mentioned the Big Ten. And if you're mentioning the Big Ten, every coach, staff member, and student participant is going to be tested every day.
Every day, yes.
Every day.
Every day.
So I, like I said at the other board meeting.
I wish I had the, I wish we had the resources at the Big Ten.
I, I'm not expecting that, but we can get kids tested at Washington. And we can get them tested, not on a daily basis, but at least to begin to participate, to make sure you're not bringing it in in the beginning, and at some other intervals. There's free testing, we have that available to us very closely. And I will keep insisting, the more this goes on, a lot of people are having a lot of residual effects from this that haven't been reported as frequently in the beginning. But now, if you're reading the journals and the other things, that some people who get this are going to have a long time effect. So I think anything we can instill about how people do this, get tested, do the right thing, is all part of the educational experience.
And if, if that's what it takes to keep our student athletes safe, then that is something that we will make happen, absolutely. I'm, you know, I'm along the same lines as you, Member Brewley, is whatever we need to do to keep our folks safe, and if it's an option, let's, let's do what we can to make it happen, you know. And then, you know, if the board decides for us to go ahead with this football season, then that is something that we will do our best to make happen as soon as possible.
Mrs. Escalante, you, you and Mr. Monk, on that committee, Dave's not, Doc's not on the call. What was the discussion and concern coming out of the committee?
It was, we talked about it quite extensively. All of the, the staff, for example, our Athletic Director, Ms. Hannah Kirk, Mr. Cribs, myself and Mr. Monk, they, I mean, they, they have a really good handle, in my opinion, on their execution plan for, or their plan of execution to make football safe for our students. Testing was brought up, that was one of the things, I think, Mr. Monk, you might have asked that question. There was somewhat of a, a question as to if we can actually make the kids do that, if we can make that mandatory, I would probably recommend, excuse me, one moment.
Well, if we can, you know, if we, we vetted this pretty good. One of the things that came out of the committee was the no spectators. Initially, they did want to have spectators, but the committee said no to the spectators, and for, for this reason, that makes it much, much easier to control. And I gave the analogy of kids coming to the game, and we know our kids like to gather around the bleachers and around the bathroom. So that, take that, that mechanism out as far as, then you have to have, you know, extra bodies to monitor that. So that's why the committee said no spectators. We came up with the no spectators. And I'm glad you said that, because we did talk about testing. So if we can get, I would go along with at least having all of our athletes tested before the season, before the first game, if we can get them free testing at Washington, I didn't know that, thanks for bringing that up. I think that, that moves that needle more towards being proactive and making sure that, my, my dog just opened up the door, get out of here, Bruno. That moves that needle more towards, you know, one less thing that the administration has to worry about as far as going forward and keeping everybody safe. At least, at least if we know, I mean, we can't keep the kids in a bubble, that's not possible. But if we, so we know that every athlete that comes on the field has tested negative, that gives a better illustration as far as the district and us preparing to do everything the safe and proper way. So I, I do agree with, I think, yes, we probably should, if we can get them free testing. And I say that, I say this, that the parents should want their son to get tested if they really want their son to get back out on the field.
Agreed.
I heard Mr. Duncan talk about the beginning of Week Four. What, 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 what type, when, when are we talking about the first game?
The first game would actually be this Friday.
We got a first game two days from now. We got small numbers, we got kids that have not live hitting. You know, because I, I watch, it's right, you know, from my office, I can see. There, there hasn't been any, what I could call live hitting, because the, the numbers are too small to, you can't run a full practice 11-on-11, because you've got too small the numbers. I'm looking at the roster that was sent to us, and I see out of those 19 names, one had, one is, is drawn through, that, that's no longer going to participate. There's, I understand, I've read through the proposals, I've read the Michigan High School Athletic Association guidelines. I understand a test, I understand it's free. But this is not the NFL, this is not the Big Ten, it's not college. We, we don't have, we can't control what kids do when they're out of practice. I, I just have some concerns around that, yeah, you get tested one time, but then are we going to require that the opposing teams, athletes get tested? Because if, if, if testing is not, you can't make it mandatory, but you know, in athletics, you can do some things in terms of, for athletes, that you can't do for just the general population, because athletes, you know, they, they're, you know, they're, they're tend to be more disciplined in terms of what they're trying to do. And they give up, you know, they'll sacrifice some things. So, but I, I, did we, do we know if their opponents, are they requiring testing? Are they requiring their athletes? I know Michigan High School Athletic just came out with, you know, with these guidelines, but you know, how many other schools out there do? The culture of the team has not been best, that they're disciplined enough or accustomed to wearing a face covering. I'm not even talking about a mask, I'm talking about some kind of face covering. You know, just, I just have, there's some concerns that all the documents that I've seen, they address, but they don't address. So I, I still have my concerns about it. This is, again, one of those, I'm grappling with it like it did last week, last Thursday, Mr. Monk. But with this, I, I'm really having more issues with it because we're not dealing with three or four-year-olds. We're dealing with, you know, kids between age, young people between ages of 14 and 18.
If I may comment?
They can't be controlled like the three or four-year-olds can be controlled. So I, I, I have my concerns, even after reading through all the proposals, all the guidelines, even not having people in the stands, I, I understand. But I, I still have some, some concerns.
Mr. President, may I comment?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, we, we can't dictate the program rules and decisions of other school districts, but the most recent release by the MHSAA on September 10th made masks mandatory for participants. And so the, if a student athlete is in a contest not wearing a mask, that student athlete will be taken off the field. So that, that is something to be, you know, be aware of during, during the contest when it comes to other schools. That will be monitored by the officials and also by the coaches. And the coaches will be held responsible for that as well.
Understandable. Mr. Monk, I thought you, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, also, we had talked about, as far, you know, now, in the new Michigan High School Athletic Association guidelines, the sidelines, the players' boxes are extended to the 10-yard line on both sides, which will allow all the players to, and the players have to have a face mask at all times. So that will extend it down. And I, we were told that the field will be marked, whereas that it will make sure that the players are standing social distance, six feet apart, which adds another element to the, the safety. I agree with you, Earl, you know, it's, it's, yeah, I, I grapple with it too. And that's the reason why we put in the extra safety guidelines, no fans, you know, and they changed the rule as far as face mask, it has to be face mask at all times on the field, only essentials, you know, and, and everything else, and you know, I'm glad Mr. Brewley brought it up as far as testing. Yeah, I think every, every athlete should get at least one test. If not, you know, have a test in the middle, maybe, you know, and, and, and introverts. But, you know, it's, I think, for lack of the better, our small numbers actually work to our benefit. We don't have, we don't have a roster of 50 kids, you know, which will really be, I think is really problematic. We have that small roster. But I agree with you, you know, let me ask Mr. Duncan, you know, I don't remember, but don't the athletes have to have a certain amount of time in pads before they can actually play a game?
During a normal season, yes, that is a parameter that, that has to be followed. But the, as, as a longtime football coach, there has been a progression over many, many years towards practicing and limiting the amount of hitting that actually occurs.
Yeah, but that, I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about what the rules say. I'm talking about, I think the rule, the Michigan Athletic Association rule say that you have to be in pads and helmets for a certain amount of time before you're going to have to play a game.
Yeah, I think under, under a normal season, I believe that would be the case. But under this circumstance, I'd have to go look at the letter of the law on it. But I, I believe that that's, you know, with them pulling the plug on the season when they did after the, the two-a-days and then reenacting recently and allowing football to go, I'd have to go look at the number of practices that they suggested, whether or not they pulled back that requirement.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we do need to look at that.
But, but any, any coach worth his salt would institute some live hitting before they went into a contest.
Well, yeah, I know, I used to coach football.
And so, you know, Coach Cribs had him out there tonight in full pads going at it.
Okay, was this the first night?
I, I cannot answer that question. I, Coach Rickman has a better viewpoint from his, from his perch out there than I do.
I'm laughing at that because it's serious, but you, you know, there, you're saying full contact. We got 17 or 18 kids. You can't have 11, there does not.
Yeah, which, which is my point, so coaches have to be smarter.
You know, because you can't practice, you know, you can't emulate a full-scale game because you don't have enough people on, to play on both sides of, on the ball. And, and we're talking about playing a game in two days.
But they've been, they've been practicing since the, they were allowed to kind of come back and.
I understand. We got 18 kids on the roster that, that was presented, that was given to me. That means, yeah, Mr. Monk, I agree, with controlling that stuff, then smaller numbers helps us. But when you're talking about putting it out there at 100% effort, every play on the football field, those small numbers hurt us. Because you have a bunch of kids that are playing both ways. We can, we can social distance them on the sidelines, we can social distance them on the bus. But they didn't change the rules of football to social distance and have kids, you know, six feet apart on the football field. They're going to be six inches apart. They're going to be tired, they're going to be breathing heavy on each other. I understand the mask and all, but I, I just, I've got concerns, I'll put it back that.
And, and I agree with you, those are valid concerns. And I actually said that to the committee. I said, you know, my, some of my board members have, will have concerns, and those concerns are valid. I said that.
And I apologize, because I usually put the motion on the floor and get it moved in second before I go into discussion. And I, I did not do that, so.
And then I, let me, can I make another comment? I mean, I've been, and I'm going to stay true to what I have always said. Right now, the positivity rate, the two-week positivity rate in McComb County stands at 3.91. So positivity rate is coming way down. And the state of Michigan is at 3.16.
The chair would entertain a motion, well, actually, there's no, the recommendation is whether or not we participate in fall sports would be, because it just, the agenda item just says fall sports. What is the, what is the recommendation coming from the committee?
The recommendation from the committee is to move forward with fall sports with all, with, move forward, fall 2020 football season and fall sports with the COVID planning for it.
With COVID what now, sir, Mr. Monk, was that?
For the COVID planning.
Okay, okay, got you. So, so the recommendation from the committee is to participate in the fall sports using the COVID guidelines. That's my dog acting crazy in the back.
I'm sorry, I had to get off, my dog and my three kids came in on me, and I had to go on mute because I was yelling.
Okay, so Mr. Monk, are you putting that in the form of a motion, sir?
Yes, yes, I move, yes.
It's been moved by Mr. Monk to participate in the football season using the COVID guidelines, and a second by Ms. Escalante. Any additional comments or concerns?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brewley?
I would like to offer an amendment that it proceed under the condition that students be tested originally as quickly as practicable and that we check with each high school over the term of the length of the program and that if any of the players on the other teams get COVID, that we be notified and that our team be tested. And here again, this would be without cost.
I'm just ready to pause, see if you got that amendment.
Okay, I proceed under condition, students get tested as soon as?
Practicable.
Practicable, okay. And that we check with other schools?
Weekly, to see if any of their students come down with COVID and when, and if we find that out, that our students then be tested to protect them and the rest of the student population.
So if I'm hearing you, Ed, help me out. Um, your amendment is that our players be tested as soon as possible.
Right.
We need to get data um the opponents in if their players are tested or if.
No, no, just if they contract COVID, I mean.
Okay, okay.
If we stay in touch with their coaches weekly, so after three weeks, we don't have to be in touch with them if we play a game, but we need to be in touch with them until that 14-day period goes. They don't come down with anything great, but if they get an outbreak, we know about it so that we can get our guys.
Oh, yeah, I I I'm just trying to get.
Can I say something?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm trying to get the the amendment, right, I'm trying to help Paul. Uh, so that our players be tested as soon as possible, that we get a report from the opposing team if they had an athlete that tested positive.
Or came down.
Or tested positive or got sick, okay? And then upon that notice, we would then um test our athletes.
Yeah, we would arrange for their testing, the testing would be of no cost to the student.
I'm just I'm just trying to see if I'm listening to words paraphrasing, just trying to guess what what it is that that um the the amendment is, because I want to get it right. So Paul, what you get out of that?
Okay, um, for the amendment, proceed under condition students get tested as soon as practical and that we check with other or with opposing teams weekly. And if they tested positive or contracted COVID, we can test our athletes at no cost.
Mr. Brooley, does that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Says amendment amended by Mr. Brooley, second by Mr. Monk, Mrs. Escalante.
Um, I just wanted to know, wouldn't that whole scenario fall under the health department? Because my understanding is if a student comes down with it, it gets reported all across the board. So if it happened to be a player from an opposing team that had contact with our players, wouldn't we automatically be notified about that and then wouldn't necessary precautions be implemented?
I think we're gonna play schools that aren't necessarily local.
I don't believe we're gonna play any team from a, well, the may maybe Michigan collegiate might be.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because we we're not in a mat, we're in an independent league, so.
Coming out of Detroit and Pontiac, that at least that's been the the past. They haven't been coming out of McComb, only one school.
Okay.
I sh I share uh Earl's concerns about the program in general, but if we're gonna do it, I just want to make sure it's as safe as possible while we do do it. And I think we should reinforce good health behaviors.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Absolutely, agreed.
And I I'm an athletic guy. I I'm always been athletic, you know, advocate. But and I understand all the guidelines, all the safety precautions, you can't be 100% on nothing, I understand that. But my concern is we got 18 kids, 18 young men, four of them that probably never played contact football in their life and their first experience uh is gonna be at a varsity level. And pilots met to play. If there's 48 minutes in the game, they probably have to pay 48 minutes in some instances.
You'll be playing both ways.
With with that number, you can't help it, you're gonna play it both ways and special teams.
Yep.
So that that that's, you know, that's again, you know, part of my concern and that's the part of the safety part.
Right.
Because I I've been down this road before when we had small numbers and when the number is not gonna generally doesn't grow to be any bigger number, real big particularly in today, you know, what's happening with, you know, with the COVID. But that number is gonna potentially decrease because of injury and you go, you know, got young kids to get out there and I don't want to, I'm not used to it. They don't know that sacrifice, Mr. Monk, for how it is to get to get hit and feel like you feel like you're gonna die and then you suck it up and run back to the huddle and, you know, let's do this again. So they don't have those type of experiences. I've seen, you know, that once you get punched in the mouth the first time, you know, I didn't like that, but that's football, but I'm not used to that and they don't come back next week to play on the team because they quit. So I'm just more, I'm I'm concerned about those numbers as well as, you know, the safety.
Yeah.
But uh, you know, again, you know, we we move forward as a board uh based on, you know, with the majority of the board feels comfortable moving forward doing.
No, Earl, those are all valid points. I mean, yeah, I think me and you are the, you know, max five and two, but, you know, we know what it's like, whereas that you tired, you look to the side and you looking at the coast like since somebody in, coast looking at you like, what you want me to do? You better stay out there. You know what I'm saying? I ain't got, I ain't got no sub for you. You know, so, yeah, I mean, he, I mean, the coach has his work, I mean, he's got to keep, I mean, there's no academic um um ease, you know, they got to do their work, they got to be online, they got to behold, I mean, they got to do all that, so, you know. Um, yeah, I mean, the coach, I mean, I, you know, the the COVID is one part, but, you know, he's got a, he he, like you say, you got, what, four or six brand-new varsity players at a varsity level? I mean, hey, last I looked, these varsity players now is like 6'8", 240 pounds. You know, there ain't no 6'5" a hundred buck and a quarter, you know, so, yeah.
About 6'1", that's what we got, a bunch of 6'1ers.
Exactly. Um, and I I would make this also comment too, on the other side, and you all, a lot of you all said it. There's a form that the Michigan High School Athletic Association came out with, where's that the coaches have to fill out every practice and every game. So, Mr. Duncan, I will implore you to make sure that 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 COVID check roster is sent to us before the game is even started, so that roster can be reviewed and are sent to them. That communication has to happen between both schools as far as that protocol goes.
We will do our best to gather that information from our opposing teams. Uh, we will certainly submit whatever's required of of our teams um prior to the contest, absolutely.
Yeah, because I read, when I read that, when I read the Michigan High School Athletic Association bulletin, that's a mandatory requirement in the COVID plan, coming back with fall sports. That form must be filled out by all teams in the state, not some, but by every football team in the state that's participating in football.
Yep, and that's that is part of kind of the reporting process and monitoring process.
Right.
That's uh an agreement amongst the A Ds to have those exchanged.
Okay, cool.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? No, excuse me, we're dealing with the amendment now, aren't we?
Yeah, amendment first, yeah.
We're dealing with the amendment.
Can you repeat the amendment, please?
I was gonna say, Paul, you got the amendment?
Oh, oh, Dave's back.
I'm back, guys.
Okay, the amendment, uh, proceed under condition students get tested as soon as practicable and that we check with opposing teams. If they tested positive or contracted COVID-19, we can test our athletes at no cost.
Yep.
That's the amendment moved by Mr. Brooley and it was seconded by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments on the amendment?
Read that amendment one more time for me, please.
Yes, sir. Okay. The amendment is proceed under condition students get tested as soon as practicable and that we check with opposing teams weekly and if they tested positive or contracted COVID, we can test our athletes at no cost.
So we require we requiring our our athletes to be tested before they play?
As soon as practicable, it reads.
Well, that's, well, yes.
That's that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, that they be tested one time as soon, there's a game Friday, I get that. But there are free tests available. If you can't find them, I will get it for you, we can make this happen. And that they get tested so we know that everyone's good from the beginning and that we check with the other teams within the, you know, two or three weeks. You you don't have to check with the team you played two months ago. It's just a 14-day period and that if they come up with something bad, that we get our guys tested again so that they know and we're not spreading this around.
So, Ed, let me, so you're saying two-way, um, teams that we played uh like if we played a team last week, we'd want to get a report if this week they, one of their students, you know, tested positive.
We're gonna get it for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just moving forward and backwards, I'm I'm just asking.
Right, exactly, but you have that, you have that window.
Got you, okay.
And you don't have to, you know, someone that you play in late in the sea, you know, early in the season, you don't have to be calling them all the time. You just have to do it within the window of what is practicable in terms of people getting the disease, spreading it to us.
So you, you know, yeah, I'm just just trying to clarify on my, um, so two or three weeks from the team, we played up the two weeks from the time we played somebody moving backwards and then, you know, two weeks in advance of the team we're gonna play.
Yes, exactly.
Got you, got you, understood.
So we're requiring the players to be tested before they play.
For free. Well, not, look, it's Friday, they're gonna play if this passes. They may not be able to do that before then, but as practicable, so in the next, we get this thing set up.
Dave, Dave, you're coming in, that's the amendment, the first one it says that we were we're requiring all the kids to get tested for free over at Washington because it's for free. We didn't know that, Ed brought that to our attention. But we're working on the amendment, right? Ed Ed brought in an amendment. Ed brought in an amendment to to cover whether a team that we played came up with COVID so that we can test our kids to make sure our kids are safe. That's basically what the amendment is saying.
Okay, I get, I I can understand that one, that makes sense. But my my, um, I'm bewildered because it's like it sounds like you're we're requiring the children to be tested, period.
We are.
In the beginning, in the beginning.
In the beginning, and then it sound like you said, and if another team comes up positive, we require the children to be tested again.
If it falls within that 14-day period, yes, because that's the.
Because then that two-week time period.
Right. Because we, actually, we will want them to be tested so that it don't spread, you know, because if we played them and we played a team and then say like this in 10 days, a team that we played, one of their players came up with COVID, well, we're in, we're in that 10-day, we're in that 14-day incubation period. So, yeah, I would, I would think we want our our kids to get tested just to make sure they're safe.
Because you're part of that tracking.
Right.
Go ahead, Doc, I see you got that that question look on your face.
I'm just, I understand the requirement to play and I understand if this might pass, what what's the board policy will be. But I'm looking at the legal ramifications, can you legally make somebody do something? I understand what the policy of the board is and what the policy will be, but can you legally make someone do something physically to themselves to do something?
Do the kids have to have a physical before they play? Is not a physical required before they play?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yes.
You can do those physical requirements.
You wanna, you wanna put this.
You wanna call, if you wanna call a law firm and our law firm tells us we can't do it, then I'm good that we can't do it, but I think you can require that for participation.
Okay.
And then what I I made the comment where is that if our parents want their sons to really be on the field, they shouldn't have no problem with taking their son to go get a free COVID test over at Washington.
And I understand that too, they shouldn't have no problem at all. I don't mind the the amendment to the motion, I apologize for jumping in late, but as long as it's in legal guidelines, not a problem. So I I I recommend if somebody put a uh a legal disclaimer into that amendment just to cover ourselves, you know. Earl, Jay, you been on this board for a minute and we've been going through so many different legal situations. I I just want to make sure we covered, C Y A.
Well, in the discussion, I asked, you know, when, you know, in the in the main motion, um, we had the same discussion, but we, you know, and, you know, about testing. Um, and my my question was, what can we make sure, how do we make sure that the team we're playing, that their athletes have been tested? We can't, we can't mandate that their their athletes, you know, be tested and you would hope other schools would, you know, have, you know, want to do that and keep their athletes safe and, you know, and keep them safe to be able to compete, but, you know, we can't, you know, I don't believe we can make it, but um are there some, there's all, there's some legal ramifications in everything.
Yeah.
Well, motion is, yeah, my saying is a bad motion, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying we should add into there as long as it's legal. That's all, we get some legal advice on that.
I got no problem.
So I don't know how that'd be reworded.
Well, see, and I I I'm I'm.
I can, as a maker of the motion, and if the secondary, you can just add at the end, as long as legally uh as long as it's legal.
Yes, I'll I'll amend this motion, it's a add as long as it's legally applicable.
Thank you, Jason. I second it, do I have to second that or has already been seconded?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
All right, Earl, you have the original motion, you have the amendment.
I I understand, I understand what what we what we are, I'm just trying to uh put in my mind what what we're, you know, the language that we just put out there. Under day, I understand Dave's concern about any legal uh liabilities that that we impose, we incur, we impose, uh, because it's like, you know, we're you know, have testing. Uh, we're mandating that, and I talked about how athletes, you know, sacrifice more so and for an athletic program, you know, you can make more requirements of of them that you than you can do of the general population. I I understand that, but in terms of, I I just want to make sure that the piece you're trying to add in terms of as long as it's legal, um, are are we expecting, we got a game Friday and if we pass this motion, what if legal counsel is dealing with some other things and they can't give us the decision by tomorrow?
You know what, Earl, I got, I think we don't need to do that because of this. This is why we don't need to do it. Because we are requiring each student athlete and family who is the parent to complete a COVID athletic participation risk acknowledgement, release and waiver form. That takes care of the legal aspect. So we can always say, hey, so, okay, let me give you an instance. If a team, if a player from an opposing team come up with COVID, we can say, all right, Mount Clemens, we are suggesting that you go get a free test at Washington. We're not mandating it, we're suggesting, but if you don't, you you've already signed a athletic participation risk acknowledgement, release waiver form, which will hold the district, the district non liable for anything that happens.
Okay, so with with that, you know, I appreciate that, but you're the one, you you, I believe you made the motion to add the live legal part and.
Well, no, I was, I was saying what Ed. No, 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 I I was, I'm sorry. I was, I was just trying to gather what Ed was trying to say, so I re I removed that. Let me remove that from that amendment.
Okay, I, because that that's what I, you know, that's what I was trying to get to moving parts, you know, to, you know. Okay, because that, that's what I, you know, that's what I was trying to get to moving parts, you know, to, you know. Come together, that, you know.
Yeah, I was just trying to paraphrase it, but no, yeah, I, I know, I didn't. Yeah. So if I made a motion, I, I, I rescind that motion.
So will the maker of the motion be rescinding also?
Well, Paul, I don't believe that was seconded, was it, or was they, or did Dave make the motion or did it?
I believe Mr. Bruley agreed to change his motion, and then Mr. Monk said he agreed.
Got you, yeah, it was Monk's second, got you, got you, got you, yeah, that's how, yes, thank you. So.
So Mr. Bruley rescinded that part, would?
I said, I said I was willing to put it in there so that another board member would be comfortable. I'm willing to do it either way.
And I don't, and I, and Ed, I don't think we need to, because we have them signed.
Then that's fine, then that's fine.
And that, and that's what, that's all I'm trying to, you know, to, you know, try to figure out here, if, if, because I remember earlier you talked about the waivers.
Right.
That, that, that recuses the, the board or the district from any liability if somebody gets, you know, Covid or, or state they get Covid from being exposed to the foot, in a football game.
Right.
Okay, so we, back to the amendment.
To the motion.
To the motion that Doc was questioning. About are we requiring athlete, our, our, our players to, to take to have the test?
And the answer was yes.
Yes, yes. So Dave, you got any more questions, or, you know, you can offer an amendment, amendment to the amendment if you're uncomfortable. But based on what Mr. Mr. Monk explained, again, are there any, you know, again, I'll throw it back into your court, into your court.
Okay, the requirement is to make sure that nobody is Covid nineteen positive. That's, that's what I'm assumed, that's what I, I'm, I'm reading from this motion, is the requirement is to make sure nobody is Covid nineteen positive. For we are covered, in case there is, and we know what steps to take. As in the fourteen day incubation period, whatever it may be. Correct? I'm just a guy that likes options, that's all, that's the type of person I am. I mean, you get, you make a requirement, that's absolute, that means you, you must do it. Now, is it a absolute to say if you show symptoms, you must be tested? Or if you don't show symptoms, you must be tested, or what I'm hearing is, bottom line, you're being tested?
You're being tested as soon as we can practically. That means that we're not gonna have to rush this for the Friday game. But at some point, when it is practicable, you get a free test.
And also, I think your amendment was also that if, with our communication with another team, if one of their players tests positive or come down within the two period, that we, we be notified, and then our players can, can be tested.
Yes.
Back to you, Doc.
So what's the difference in saying they should be tested after every game then? That every game is gonna be new, is it, is it?
We're not saying, we're not saying that, I'm not saying that.
Because there's, there's, there's other protocols put into place, Doc, that they don't have to be tested after each game.
Okay. What's those protocols?
Uh, the ones that we talked about at the meeting, um, the, uh, the Covid, the Michigan High School Athletic Association Covid monitoring form that has to be filled out by each coach before each practice and each game, and that'll be, and Mr. Duncan said, that will be coincided with both teams. Athletic directors have already spoke about that, that communication will happen. Of course, you know, all the other protocols with the no, no fans and everything else.
Okay, so right now, we just making sure we clear, we're going to start off with a clean slate, that's what the testing is all about.
Right.
Yes. We're not infecting anyone or each other.
Okay, well, I understand, I think it's a very good motion, I think it's a very good amendment. I understand where it's coming from, I understand the reason behind it. I'm still a person of options. I'm not gonna support it, but really behind the scenes, I do support it. But I just can't come off and say, without the options, like, if you're not positive, you're not showing signs and symptoms. I'm, I'm just looking at them as guidance, as everybody else inside the community. I mean, with that, with that notion, I think everybody that comes through the district or walks through the door should be tested. But I know that's gonna be ridiculous to, to request or regulate or require something like that. So I'm just letting you know where I stand on that one, I think it's a great motion, I'm just not gonna support it. But, um, that's cool, it's all good. It's a great motion, though.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the amendment? And do we need to recapitulate the amendment?
Yeah, read it again, please.
Proceed under condition, students get tested as soon as practicable, and that we check with, and that we check with opposing teams weekly. And if they contracted or test positive for Covid nineteen, we can test our athletes at no cost.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the amendment?
Uh, no, just a comment, I think that's worded correctly, because it said we can and not we will. So that's the proper, that is proper wording.
Any additional questions, comment, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
No.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Jarrett?
I'm kinda on the fence here. I'll go with yes, but.
Okay, I have yes?
Yeah.
And Mr. Rickman?
No, motion carries. I mean, amendment carries. Now, Mr. Shepard, can you read the main motion and add the amendment to it? So now we're reading the motion as amended, this is now the main motion.
Okay. All right, I have participate or move forward, which is?
Move forward, move forward, move forward.
Okay, move forward with football.
With fall twenty twenty football season.
Fall twenty twenty football season. With Covid guidelines.
With Covid planning, yes, that, that's the motion. The motion is to, the motion is to move forward with fall twenty twenty football season with Covid planning.
Covid planning. Okay, now for the amendment, uh, and proceed under condition, students get tested as soon as practicable, and that we check with opposing teams weekly, and if they tested positive or contracted Covid nineteen, we can test our athletes at no cost.
So that is the main motion, that motion as amended, so that is the main motion. All right. Questions, comments, concern on the main motion to move forward with the twenty twenty fall football schedule using Covid guidelines. Also, the, as soon as practicable, the student athletes are tested. We are, we're in contact with our competing teams. If they determine that one of their student athletes become, you know, test positive for Covid or comes down with, with Covid, that our students, athletes can be tested. And to caveat that, was a two week, the, the, the fourteen day period was the time keeping in contact with the competing team. I think I might have got it correct, any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
So if this motion dies, there is no football season.
That is correct.
That's correct, yes, sir. But you, you, you welcome the comment, because you weren't, you weren't here when we, you know, you can always discuss at any point, you know, on, on any motion.
I think the guideline, the guidelines will be discussed at the committee, right, Jay? The guidelines we're talking about was the ones we discussed at the committee?
That is correct.
Okay, and only thing additional to the, to those guidelines or, or the committee recommendation is the amendment that was made by Mr. Bruley, correct?
That is correct.
And, um, I understand amendment, I understand motion. I still have my concerns. Any question, any additional questions, comments? Um, because we haven't passed the motion yet, yeah, no, we have not. On the, on the motion. The play with the, with the, you know, we test, we get information from the opposing team within the two week period, and if, and if they have somebody tested positive or have Covid, we can, our players can, can be tested. That's the short.
Yep.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Going once. Twice. Hearing and hearing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
No.
Hey, you forgot.
I'm sorry, Dr. McFadden, I'm sorry I had you as absent, I'm sorry, Dr. McFadden.
No.
Motion carries.
Who knows?
Motion carries. Okay, next, Middle City digital plan. And I believe with Middle Cities, we have an opportunity to appoint someone, usually it's the superintendent. So Ms. Bill, take over.
Sure, Middle Cities is a group self insurance, property and casual casualty pool. The group is run for and by its members, and we use them for loss control, safety training and risk management advice. So we are asking that Mrs. Potter and myself be added to the risk management as a trustees. I would be the designated trustee and Mrs. Potter would be the alternate.
Jared, entertain the motion relative to agenda item eight, Middle Cities District Appointment.
The move.
Moved by Dr. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Jarrett. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Question.
Mr. Bruley.
When you use the word added, are we keeping anyone else from the school district? Or is this the appointment of you two?
This is the appointment of the two of us, Mrs. Davis was the person.
Added not that there's an additional Mount Clemens person there?
There is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Monk, I know you've been waiting all night.
I've been waiting all night, you know, I've been waiting.
So, Bill, I'm, I'm a punt for you, okay, how about that?
And I know Ms. Bill ain't got no problem with that. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rickman. Committee offers first reading recommendations. Policy twenty twenty, twenty two sixty six special update Title IX regulations. Policy twenty two sixty six, non discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs and activities is a replacement policy for policy fifty five seventeen point zero two, which is being eliminated. Policy twenty two sixty six is mandatory policy that memorializes the key requirements of the new Title IX regulations that the US Department of Education Office of Civil Rights, OCR, released on May sixth, twenty twenty. The new regulation going into effect on August fourteenth, twenty twenty, which means that public school districts must follow its mandate when addressing, investigating and adjudicating allegations of sexual harassment occurring in the district's education program and activities that the district received notice of or, or after August fourteenth. It is expected that districts will need to certify, affirm their compliance with Title IX and these new implementation regulations when applying for and receiving federal funds related to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Policy fifty five seventeen oh two Title IX regulations is rescinded. Policy forty three sixty two point zero one threatening behavior towards staff members revised. This corresponds policy, policy thirty three sixty two oh one for instructional staff was revised in the volume thirty four, number two, updated in February twenty twenty in response to client's request to provide more clarity to the characterization of threatening behavior. This revision is recommended for adoption. Policy fifty sixteen removal, suspension, expulsion and permanent exclusion of students. Policy fifty, fifty six eleven, due process rights revised. I'm sorry, policy fifty sixteen is also revised. Revision to these two policies provide for the use of the preponderance of evidence, standard of evidence and determination of student discipline. This standard is consistent with the standard of evidence that has been applied in the non discrimination and anti harassment policies in effect. In addition, retention of investigatory records has been added to both policies. These revisions is recommended for adoption. Policy fit, I'm sorry. Moving down, policy seventy four forty, facility security revised. This policy has been revised in response to Public Act twenty twenty dash forty five, effective June first, twenty twenty, which authorizes the superintendent to install temporary door locking devices when being necessary. The law requires notification and approval of local fire department and law enforcement agencies, as well as the training of staff working in the building where such devices are used. This option language should be adopted if such a device or system is to be used. Policy eighty four forty point zero one protective facial coverage during pandemic epidemic. New, this new policy is provided in response to client requests. It is based on guidance from the Center of Disease Control and Provision, CDC. The guidance and content of this policy may include and the district's restart reopening plan for the twenty 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 one school year. This policy provides coverage for students, district employees and volunteers, visitors. This new policy is provided for district recommendation. Mr. Chair, I move that the above policies be approved by the board for first reading.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Approved the first reading of the policies, it's supported by Ms. Escalante. Uh, Mr. Monk, of those policies that you revise, how many of those are federally mandated and state mandated?
Every single one of them.
Every single one, uh, how about the, um, eighty four fifty point one, the mask, is that, that's new?
Wait, yes, that's new, and we needed to pass that, because that actually strengthens our, um, the plan that we, the board approved, um, for, um, my, the words are losing me here, for the, uh, our Covid fan, plan for the district.
Right, yeah, and, uh, my question, and I, I appreciate that, and, uh, my, my question just is, is there any language in? my, my question just is, is there any, uh, language in that policy that provides for those people that have medical conditions that won't allow them to have a face ma- a mask or a face covering?
Yes, hold on just a second, I'm gonna read from you that clause. Where is that? Um, just a second here.
If, if, if it's in the policy, I, I'll go, you don't have to go back, but.
Yeah, but it stays in there, where's that, it is the, is, is the section here, where's that? Um, it says that, uh, all, uh, employees and students will, uh, will wear mags unless it is, um, uh, unless it's non-feasible medically for them not to wear masks.
Got you, okay, thank you, that, that, that was my only concern.
Yes, and then for the one, especially for the Title IX, that Title IX policy, that's essential for us because if we don't have that policy, um, approved in our, uh, uh, policies, we can, can literally not receive federal funding. That's all, that's all part of us, the requirement to receive federal funds.
I do have the wording if you'd like it read.
No, that's not.
Oh, yeah, I read it, I read it, I thought I did, yeah, I think I did.
It's just the first reading, so, no, that's not.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, yeah. But yes, well, yes, these are, uh, both state and federal, uh, recommended, uh, policy revisions and, uh, introductions.
Got you, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any additional questions on the motion on the floor? To approve this, the first reading. Hearing seeing none, call roll please.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Brooly.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, time to come off mute.
I'm off muting, but, um, I've been losing, um, connectivity over here, so I'm not gonna turn my video on. It seems to adjust that for some reason, so, um, my superintendent's comments, in the board pack you have, um, the extended COVID nineteen learning plan for Mount Clemens Community Schools. Um, on that plan, if you, um, you can go through it at your leisure, but, um, the goals right now, um, the goals are that, um, the student will have, the district will have an increased number of students meeting their reading growth as measured by their benchmark assessment. The benchmark assessments that we take here in Mount Clemens is the NWEA. We're getting those set up right now, um, for testing to begin, we need to test within the first nine weeks of school, so that means by the second week in November, so we'll be opening those testing windows really quickly, um, there will be a goal in reading and in math. Um, this plan will be, um, put on our website and will be revised and revisited by the board, um, at every board meeting. Today, I would like to have been able to, um, present to you, um, a list of our engagement of our students, uh, in the first, what have we had now, seven days of school? But right now, we are still working with Power School and pupil accounting and direction from the ISD, so our attendance is all over the board, so I do not have an accurate reading for you right now. We are again servicing our students remotely, so we are seeing our students and the requirement is that each student will have two times a week contact with a teacher and where they are discussing their academic and their learning plans. Um, we, um, the King is doing some face-to-face, just for our, um, special education students, those students are coming in one-on-one with their teachers for therapy and testing. I will give you a better update at our October meeting. The other thing too, um, just to keep all of you abreast of what's happening is I'm meeting with all of the staff, and it's not just me, it's all of the administrators. I'm meeting with all the school staff to get everyone's voices on the table before we come to you with a complete return to learn plan, um, as far as what we'd like to do to see bringing our kids back to school. I met with King yesterday and I am meeting with Seminole next Tuesday and I am meeting with the high school and middle school staff on Wednesday, so I will be able to update you better, um, with what our plans are and what the teachers have to say, um, because I want to have teacher support and administrator support before we move forward with bringing kids back. GSRP program, um, the kids and the teachers are excited, we are looking at that program beginning on Monday, um, when the, um, the buses will be running, so the kids are pretty excited and so are the parents. That's it.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. That takes us to agenda item eleven, committee reports. Anything additional from the Business Finance Committee?
What was on mute there? No, I think you've covered everything and, um, um, no further reports.
All right. Any questions, other chair? Yes.
One minute, um, I did have one thing I forgot about, and that was, um, actually, kudos, um, when I was talking to Barbara earlier and stuff, they have a, um, for the ordering system or the ordering, they're using REMIC, R E M C pricing, which is considerably less than Staples, uh, saving just one order for some items for school supplies for Seminole, for art list, just to, to let you know that, um, instead of paying, uh, five, well, I'm not sure, this is all in, um, handwritten here. And I apologize, Barbara, if I'm gonna get this wrong, but for just one school supply like Sketch Diary at Staples for six hundred, it would cost four dollars and nine cents. What REMIC is giving them is one dollar and twelve cents, so, um, um, the superintendent, assistant superintendents and the staff are working to decrease the cost of supplies considerably, which is really great savings for the district. And with the recommendation of using this company first, the REMIC, which is from the state of, I, I believe it's the one that's recommended, and then, um, to doing that is gonna save the district a lot of money in supplies. Kudos to the staff, I wanna say thank you. That's all I had.
Any questions, other chair? Mr. Lennonberry. Community Coalition.
Mr. President, I do have a very short, uh, report for you. We will be having our drug take back day on Sunday, October twenty-fourth at the Wilson Gym from ten AM to two PM. Uh, this will be a drop-off event where residents can drive up and, uh, members of the coalition will then take the prescription or unused drugs from the car and safely dispose of them, so there will not be any contact within the actual building itself.
All right. Uh, any questions, other chair, or excuse me, Mr. Lennonberry? Thank you, Mr. Lennonberry. Uh, curriculum personnel, any additional information?
Sir, sir, no additional information.
Any questions, other chair? Thank you, Dr. McFadden, there has not been an educational foundation, uh, meeting. Monk, I'm pretty sure you've exhausted everything we need to know tonight, but I'll let you up next. Any additional information, Mr. Monk?
No additional.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, other chair? What do you mean you don't have no additional information?
Oh, God.
And there has not been a legislative, uh, meeting. Takes us to agenda item twelve, board comments. Uh, begin, Mrs. Escalante.
I knew it. Um, I just wanna tell. What, you sound, you're breaking up in that basement.
Every time, every time you spoke tonight, I got it right, I didn't mix you up, so that's why I gave it first.
Janine was not here. You didn't have anybody to confuse me with. No, I just wanna, um, just tell everybody that, um, just to keep your chin up, I know there's just a lot of unknowns still, and this is just a crazy time in, in the world of education, but, um, I appreciate and am thankful for everybody that's working hard behind the scenes, teachers, staff, custodians, everybody, everybody that, um, works together to make our district what it is, thank you for everything that you're doing. Um, you know, I, I think everyone's hope is that the kids will be back face-to-face sooner than later. Um, that's where kids should be ultimately, and, um, that I believe is the goal, everybody's goal, um, in the future, we just wanna make sure we do it safely. Um, and I just want to wish everybody a good rest of your week. Enjoy this nice weather, fall is here, I am a huge fan of fall. Insider mills and donuts, so, um, if I can safely get some, I will. How can you give a thumbs down, Earl? Uh-uh. Anyways, um, I hope you have a good night and thank you for everything that you guys are doing and, um, once a bath, there always a bath.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, sir, um, just wanna say, um, thank you to, uh, the superintendent and her staff, the entire staff, um, from everybody, from the, uh, custodians all the way up to her office. Um, I know this has been a trying time, um, and I know it's back and forth, up and down, side to side, um, but the word of God says this too shall pass, so hopefully it will soon. Um, I want to, um, just, I wanna ask my board members to, we have a lot of emails going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and I say that to say this, I would encourage all my board members to use their, uh, Mount Clemens, um, email, um, for the ease of our superintendent and the data, um, that's in the communication she needs to send to us. I've actually was on, uh, Board Book premiere following along and it is fabulous. I can go to a tab, I can click on the, um, the, uh, what I need to click on as far as the PDF, it comes up, I can move it to the next one. And I know it's been a hassle throughout the years for when the superintendent has to make an adjustment, where she gotta make the adjustment, and she's gotta rescan it, and she gotta resend it out. And by her going into Board Books, she can do all that in Board Books and we can just log into Board Books and see all the updates, adjustments and everything that we need to do, so I would, I would just ask that all my fellow board members, let's, let's make it easy on her, um, which will make it easy on us, um, as far as information and, uh, you know, making sure that, uh, communication is mainstream as much as possible. Um, and last but not least, um, just wanna let my board members know, I probably will not be around for the next board meeting. Um, I am going in for surgery, I have been diagnosed with spinal stenosis of the L four, L five. So, I'll be going in for surgery on October seventh. Um, hopefully it'll go good, and, uh, I know it's gonna go good because I, I'm trusting in, in, in God that it's gonna go good, so I will see y'all on the other side. But I just wanna let y'all know that I will not be around, um, for the next meeting or next month. I will be in the hospital, then I'll be at home resting. Uh, those are my comments. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Monk, just, just move your camera to your bedroom, to your rehabilitation center.
Right, right, exactly.
That's what I was gonna say, no excuses.
Put it on the screen, if you on your back, put it on the ceiling, you know?
That's right. I come home to the phone for you, I live right around the corner from you.
And you know why Christina said, you know why Christina said that, because that means she gotta do policy.
Yeah, she got.
I got you, I can handle it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Monk, and, uh, good luck with that, yes, sir. Dr. McFadden.
Yes, sir. I wanna say, uh, thank you to all my board members for a very, uh, well-respected board meeting tonight. I mean, we put the things out on the floor that needed to be talked about and, uh, we made some tough decisions, some good decisions, and some valuable decisions, I'm gonna say thank you to all you guys. I really appreciate you, I do, seriously. Um, I also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Montgomery, um, for the things that she has done in this district. I wanna say, um, we got a lot going on, especially with football, we just wanna keep people safe. At the bottom line, we're gonna keep them safe. Uh, this stuff that's going on right now with the COVID nineteen virus is real serious and we take it serious. So, I mean, sometimes we say things that look different than other, than, than what you think it might appear, but a lot of things behind the scenes that people don't understand. Well, maybe, maybe they do, but we don't know. So, um, I'm not gonna belabor this, those are my comments, and thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Mr. Brooly.
Safety and health have to come first right now. It makes all of our lives harder. It makes the work of the teachers, staff and school community more difficult. But without good health, there's no good learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooley. Mrs. Jarrett.
Hey, um, I just wanted to tell Mr. Monk one, well, I got a couple other things, but I was at the Sleep Number store and I saw they had a TV mounted on the ceiling, you can do it, okay? Um, my.
They're trying to tell me something, Doc, they, they don't wanna do policy, do they?
I'm being placed zoom, okay?
No, when they touch that policy, but they'll figure it out real quick.
Same.
Hey there, watch it.
I, uh, I, I have to say the staff and the, uh, administration this year. Here, I'm very impressed. I do need to get training on this board book and I do need to get my email squared away because Mr. Monk was right, I should be using the new, or the email, and that is a problem. So, uh, schedule me for training. Stay safe, stay healthy, and, um, just, you know, this is the new normal, so, thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarrett. Well, I know, it may be people wondering that while, you know, we had the last couple, last couple meetings, um, we had, I think we had the August meeting, uh, in face-to-face, and then we had the workshop, uh, last week, uh, face-to-face, which brought into con- concern, uh, the governor's executive orders. Uh, you can have students in a class more than ten, but school boards come up under a different executive order. And until August one, uh, we could not have a, uh, a, a meeting, uh, host, uh, a public meeting that had more than ten people, regardless of the size of the room, uh, that we're, that we're in. Uh, with seven board members, two administrators, and then, uh, Mr. Shepherd, that, that would only be the people that could be, be at the meeting. Uh, thus, we chose to do it virtually, uh, where more people, uh, could be, uh, a part of, of that meeting. Um, so we, we apologize for that, but we're, we're trying to stay compliant, uh, with the governor's executive orders. Uh, we're trying to lead by example, not by being mavericks, uh, in this situation, because as everyone has stated, uh, COVID i- is real, uh, and it's all about, uh, staying healthy. Uh, to our teachers, men, our administrators, our support staff. Uh, I, my hat goes off, kudos. Uh, you might think that working at home, uh, is easy and it's the idea thing, you know, you can get up at, at whatever time you want, you can keep your house shoes on all day and still work, uh, but that's not the case. Uh, i- it's a whole new learning, uh, scale that everybody is going through, uh, in, in, in attempts to use technology to, to continue to be as, as normal as we possibly can uh, through the avenues of technology. I'm zoomed out. Um, all the meetings that I go to on Zoom, I, I'm zoomed out, and the meetings that I have to sponsor and chair, um, I'm zoomed out, but that, that's, that's the new norm. that, that's, that's the new norm, and that's what we have to do un- until another time that we, we can do something differently, so, uh, my, my hats and a hat goes off to all of our staff that, that have retrained themselves, uh, to be able to provide, uh, educational experiences for, for our students, uh, meal opportunities for our students, or whatever, you know, the, whatever your role is in the district. Um, I, I, I say thank you, uh, because this, doing this stuff remotely is a lot more work, in my opinion, in my belief, than it is when you do it person-to-person. Um, and we, we've had a lot, we had a lot of long discussion today, uh, on some, on on some matters that, uh, very near and dear to all of us, uh, and that is the safety and health of our students and, and our staff, and I did not, I'm, I'm an athletic advocate. I'm, you know, I support athletics, uh, I, I wish the football team well, uh, but there are triad of reasons that made me uncomfortable about the port moving forward, the football program, understanding, um, you know, what it, what it does for, for young people, and one, we're, we're not face-to-face uh, in our classrooms yet, and I kinda think that athletes are given some pri- privilege, privileged treatment, uh, in, in this regards, um, that's just my perspective. Uh, this, this COVID night, this COVID thing is real, and you could get it from anywhere at any point in time, regardless, uh, of the, the, the safety measures you take, and it's, you know, no spitting on the field, no, I, you know, I, you know, I play football, I understand, you know, you get tired, you know, you, the mask is, face covering is not gonna be on, and, and much of the coaches wanna try to do it, and laps for, we're getting, they're not gonna be in one hundred percent of the time, and I'm not fooling myself to, uh, to say that that's, that's gonna happen. A- and then the big, a big, also, the, the biggest concern that I have is the, the lack of numbers that we have, and the burden that that's gonna put, uh, on, on our students. But, you know, I, I wish them well, you know, we've had low numbers in the past, uh, sometime at work, uh, sometime it didn't work, um, I just would hate that, that we, you know, we, we scheduled three or four, five games, and then, you know, after game one or two, we have to cancel the season, uh, for various reasons. Um, we have a, a lot of, uh, work that to do, uh, this year, and we don't even know what that work is gonna be about because things are, uh, so rapidly changing every day, and it's based on, uh, what's happening in the world, uh, with, with, with the, with this virus, and, you know, we, we just have to be limbo, nimble, and limber enough to, to, to be like a willow tree, and, you know, sway and sway with the wind, and, and, and hopefully that, uh, we use the numbers, we look at the numbers, we use science, and we make the right decisions, uh, as we move forward, uh, because hopefully they'll say that, um, we're not meeting, uh, via Zoom, our students are not meeting at home, uh, via technology that will, that will be face-to-face, but until then, mask up, stay healthy, stay safe. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Report.
Moved by, report by Dr. McFadden. Uh, call roll, please.
Paul.
Mr. Shepherd.
I'm sorry, Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Ms. Escalante.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned, what is the time, what is my clock said?
Nine twenty-four.
Nine twenty-four. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.